Sir. Honorable Pernell Halona.
Hello, who's present?
You, Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Present.
Sir, Honorable Charlene So.
I'm present.
Very much. Honorable Daniel E. So.
I'm here.
Sir, Honorable Edison J. Winika. Honorable Edison J. Winika. Here we do have five members come to the quorum.
Thank you, committee members, for, um, calling in and being present. For those of you at the DNF conference room. Um, at this point in time, sir Che, Honorable Paul Begay. Do you please provide the invocation for us?
Well, she, uh, got there, been the, uh, Chair. Daniel So, Vice Chair Shannada. Uh, Don gets later. Honorable members of the Health Education Human Services Committee. Staff, and those that are listening. Uh, many, many, uh, each, each, uh, with each prayer, we ask for guidance. We ask for your help from, from on high, that we may be able to, uh, plan and make plans and have good discussions. Uh, words, uh, being used that are good, that are healing. And those that don't, uh, become negative thoughts. We ask for your guidance in this, Lord. We ask for good thoughts and, and good conversations so that we may be able to help our people. Those that are on the agenda today. We ask that you help them also so that they can be blessed and that they can deliver the messages and the reports to us, uh, with good understanding, good comprehension. We, we could say, uh, yeah, many, many. Thank thee, Lord, for the moisture that has been brought to us, uh, here on our land. We desperately need more of this moisture. And we continue to ask, uh, that the moisture be plentiful on all, all parts of, uh, our land as well as, uh, throughout the, uh, the lands that are being bothered with drought and, and, say. Those that are in need today, those that are in need of comfort, uh, and that you watch over them also. Those that have, uh, been, uh, touched with, uh, lost ones. And we ask that they go through healing, that they have comforted their home and that they be strong. Given the strength to, to support each other, uh, kinship and relatives. But the, uh, uh, beneath me, God, who has been there, they were given an agenda. It's not me, not me. We touch probably every, every one of us, uh, our hu- house- household and our relatives. And we experience, uh, some of these tragic, uh, endings, uh, in some cases. We continue to look up to you and ask for your blessing, protection and, and guidance. Although he has the not often, then he does. Uh, but so these, and we saw blessing. Those at the local level, at the chapter level, even within the homes, our mothers and fathers and grandparents. Where, where the true leadership begins, where the root of all leadership begins in the home. We ask that their parents, grandparents, relatives be blessed. At the level of, as well as the one, uh, Wonder Rock level. With the Office of President and Vice President, Speakers. Office, and also the judicial branch. Ask for good cooperation and good working relationship with the county officials also, as well as the state, state of Arizona and New Mexico, Colorado and Utah. Uh, all the way up to, to the national level, the federal level in Washington, DC. Ask that we, we have good thoughts, uh, towards each other. And, uh, these thoughts include, uh, helping each other. Supporting each others through this, these times, us, the pandemic. That, uh, we'll be able to give help and release, uh, to our, our loved ones here, our people here on the, on the nation. Ask for peace. About the world, though we hear of wars and confrontations, we ask that there be peace. Put back from world leaders and all the countries that we may be able to live in. The world, peaceful countries, have respect for each other, share in love for each other. Ask for your guidance, dear Lord. Our prayer this morning, stated in the name of thy son Jesus Christ. Amen.
Yeah, I had lots of chase. You for the most gracious prayer, very humbling, um, aspect. Yeah. Let those words of the prayer guide us in our work. But, Ayla, um, committee members, do we have any announcements?
Mr. Chair.
Okay, uh, Ms. Angelita Benali, you have the floor.
Uh, good, thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, uh, Yat Eben. Uh, just the one announcement to remind the, um, Hess members that there is a, a proposed Navajo Nation Council special session at one o'clock today. Thank you. Oh, it begins at one o'clock, but it also is scheduled to, um, meet tomorrow, uh, on Thursday and, uh, as well as on Friday. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hmm, and thank you, committee members, for signing on to that petition. We appreciate that. Um. Then let's go on to the, um, recognizing guests and visiting officials. For all the folks that are on the call, please introduce yourself. Committee members, uh, just, uh, I'm wondering if Ms., uh, Loyah, um, Henderson is on the call? I understand she will be, uh, um, listening, um, to see if there's any questions that would go to the Office of Legislative Council. Ms. Henderson.
Good morning, Chair. Um, yes, um, Loyah Hanachni Henderson, um, with Office of Legislative Council. I will be, um, covering this meeting this morning and answering any questions. It's great to be here this morning. Thanks.
Thank you. And for the other folks on the call.
Good morning, Chair. Committee members, this is Michelle Morse with Navajo Department of Health on the call.
Good morning, Chair. This is Dr. Dim with Department of Health.
Anyone else?
Hello, good morning.
Oh, okay.
Oh, Yat, uh, good morning. This is Chairman Johnson with the Office of the President and Vice President.
Oh, Yat E. Anybody else? Let's proceed, um, to, uh, reviewing and adopting the agenda, Ms. Angelita Benali.
Yes, good morning, um, Mr. Chair and, um, members of the Health Education Human Services Committee. You have your proposed agenda, the Health Education Human Services Committee, twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council Regular Meeting, June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two, residing to Honorable Daniel E. So, Chairperson, Honorable Carl R. Slater, Vice Chairperson. Places, uh, via telecommunications, Wonder Rock, Navajo Nation, Arizona. One, call meeting to order, roll call invocation announcements. Two, recognize guests and visiting officials. Three, review and adopt the agenda. Four, review and adopt the journals. One is for June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two. The second is for June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two. Reports are, A, from the Navajo Department of Health regarding the, uh, FY twenty-twenty-two comprehensive budget, uh, CS dash forty-nine dash twenty-one, regarding the third quarter report of legislative concerns. This includes Daltech's for legislative concerns on repairs, maintenance, and capital improvements at Daltech's facilities, the senior centers. Presenters are Charlotte Francis, Senior Management Analyst with the Navajo Department of Health, and Dr. Jill Jim, Executive Director for Navajo Nation Department of Health. B, Office of the Controller, an update on late outstanding payments or no payments from Navajo Nations to vendors and service contractors slash providers for services rendered to Navajo Nation. Presenters are Elizabeth Begay, Controller with the Office of the Controller, Robert Willie, General Accounting Manager, Office of the Controller, Laura Johnson, Contract Accounting Manager, regarding external fund sources with the Office of the Controller. C is Hunter Point, uh, Boarding School. It's regarding the budget balance summary and budget expenditures for FY twenty-twenty-two. The second is a mandatory student vaccination for spring twenty-twenty-two school year and regarding the student accommodations for lessons. Presenters are, um, Julia Donald, Principal for Hunter's Point Boarding School, Baron Logan, Business Manager for Hunter's Point Boarding School, Gloria Morris, Parent Coordinator for Hunter's Point Boarding School. Uh, Ms. Genevieve Jackson, President, School Board Member for Hunter's Point Boarding School. Uh, also invited are Sharon Pintle, Deputy, uh, Direct, Bureau Director for the BIE. Also, Dr. Walter Coulter, Acting Education Program Administrator for Navajo Bureau of Operated Schools. Dr. Edie Morris, uh, Education Program Administrator for BIE. Karen Malone, Acting District Superintendent for the Bureau of Indian Education, Navajo Area Office. Emily Arbeso, Special Assistant for BIE in, for the Navajo area. Also, Dr. Jill Jim with the Navajo Department of Health, as well as, uh, Dr. Harold Begay, Superintendent for the Navajo, or Department of the Navy Education, and Dr. Carmen Muffet, Assistant Superintendent for Department of the Navy Education. Also is, uh, Ms. Catherine Dempsey, Community Member for Oak Springs, the slash, uh, Pine Springs. And also Michelle Wilson, who's a parent, uh, at Hunter's Point Boarding School. Six new business nun, seven old business nun, eight close the meeting announcements adjournment in the next meeting. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Benali. Uh, and I, members of the Health Education Human Services Committee, what are your wishes with this proposed agenda read into the record?
Question one?
Second.
Thank you, Honorable Halona. It was just before you said that, I was gonna say star six, Halona. Um, um, with that, committee members, we have a motion by Honorable Pernell Halona and a second by Honorable Vice Chair Russell Slater. Any additions? deletions or modifications to this?
Chair's honor.
Honorable Halona, have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I was wondering if we could add on, uh, that legislation, uh, uh, twenty dash twenty-two to the agenda? And, uh, it was supposed to be safe for the next round, but, uh, according to the laws, uh, changes that they're trying to make won't be able to, they won't be able to make it, uh, any, any after the first of January. Oh, in July, excuse me. I was wondering if I can get that added on to the agenda today, Chair?
Most. Honorable Halona, I'm a little puzzled about the law that you're talking about. The plan of operations are not, as I understand it, it can be amended at any time.
Well, I was called by, uh, uh, Department of Social Services, and they told me that, uh, the changes that they're trying to make can't, can't be made until, uh, uh, they need to be made before the first of January. I mean, uh, I was thinking that it's, uh, July. Um. Mr. Gary, you online?
Mr. Chair.
Chairman, have this, yeah, I, she can explain that a little bit for, uh, further detail. Yeah?
Ms. Begay.
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, um, requesting permission to address the, the committee.
Yeah, Halona's already, Honorable Halona has already opened the door for you to address the committee.
Uh, good morning, Mr. Chair, she, uh, the committee. Um, um, I was, um, informed, uh, that any changes to a proposed plan of operation, cannot be made, uh, within the last quarter of the respective fiscal year. Because this plan of operation, um, the legislation was introduced in fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. And I was advised that changes would not be considered in the last quarter of the, uh, current fiscal year, um, as required in the budget instruction manual. I don't know, I may have been mis, um, advised, but, or ill-advised, but that was the, the advice or the rec, information that I was informed. And as a result, I contact Delegate Halona. If it can be changed, um, if there's no restriction, then, um, um, it can, it can be added to future meeting agenda. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms., uh, Loyah Henderson. Here's your first big question coming to you. And if you need help, uh, please con- consult your colleague, Ms. Henderson.
Yes, um, sure, so I, uh, I've heard the question and I am researching that now. I will get back with her shortly, okay?
And, and, um, I know that, uh, the Budget and Finance Committee, they, just last week, adopted the twenty-twenty-three, um, Budget Instruction Manual. So you might, uh, consult with Ms., uh, Lauraleen Fahy regarding that, uh, aspect. And if need be, then we could also forward that question to Mr. Dominic T. Vio. Uh, so we have a request to add legislation. Motion to modify the agenda. Honorable Carl Slater, what are your thoughts? Do you want to wait for the answer or? Give me some guidance.
This is regarding any additional amendments to the legislation?
Yeah. I mean, uh, 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 to amend the agenda to add the, uh, legislation that would amend the plan of operations for division of social services.
I think we should vote on that as an independent amendment to the agenda.
Okay, uh, Honorable Halona. I guess, uh, the thought is pending, uh, answer from Legislative Council regarding the ability to amend a plan of operation. Seems like the key wo- key date was July one, and I hadn't heard that particular item before. So if need be, let's, uh, adopt the agenda as read into the record. And once we get a definite answer from Office of Legislative Council, we can suspend the floor rules to add the item that you want to add to today's agenda.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. I appreciate that.
Okay. So with that, you withdraw your motion to amend?
I'll withdraw the motion to amend until we, uh, get the answer from, uh, uh, O F E and then we'll, I'll, uh, make the motion to, uh, add on to the agenda again. Once we get the final word from them. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that.
Ms. Begay, did you, did you hear all that?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, we just stand by on it. We'll, we'll agenda forward first. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Halona. Um, with that, committee members, we're back to the motion to adopt the agenda as read into the record. Any other additions, deletions? One, two, three, four. Mr. Moes, roll call vote on the agenda as read into the record. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Good morning, everyone. Honorable Paul Begay Junior. Honorable Paul Begay Junior votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona.
Honorable Green.
Honorable Pernell Halona votes green. Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater votes green. Honorable Charlene So.
They vote green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Edison J. Winika. Honorable Edison J. Winika votes green. Chair, you got a vote of five in favor, zero opposed?
Thank you. Uh, let the record show, a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, the chair not voting. Let's go on to item number four, review and adopt the journals. Ms. Angelita Benali and Mr. Moes.
Yeah, Mr. Chair and members of the, uh, Health Education Human Services Committee, you have two journals to consider. One is for June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and the other is for June twenty-second, twenty-two. And I believe Mr. Moes did email them out to the members for their review. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moes.
Yes, sir, Chair. I emailed them out yesterday. Yes?
Hey, um.
Honorable Otto So, put your phone on mute. And we'll document that you're on the phone call at ten forty-four. With that, committee members, we have a motion to adopt the two journals.
Motion, Halona?
Motion by Honorable Pernell Halona. Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, Yat E. By Honorable Edison Winika. There's, uh, no, um, discussion on any corrections or additions. Let's, uh, then take it to vote to adopt the two journals. Mr. Moes.
Yes, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Junior. Honorable Paul Begay Junior votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona. Honorable Pernell Halona. Honorable Pernell Halona votes green. Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater votes green. Honorable Charlene So.
Green.
Charlene So votes green. Honorable Edison Winika, green. Honorable Edison J. Winika votes green. Chair, a vote of five in favor, zero opposed?
Thank you, committee members. Five, five in favor, zero opposed, the chair not voting. Let's go on to item five, report. A, Ms., uh, Angelita Benali, rev- review that particular, um, aspect of the report.
Um, yes, Mr. Chair.
And then we'll turn it over to, um, Dr. Jill Jim and Ms., uh, Charlotte Francis.
Okay.
Ms. Benali?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You have the five reports. A is the Navajo Department of Health regarding the NDOH, um, FY twenty-twenty-three comprehensive budget. And it's, uh, And it's, uh, the resolution is C S dash forty-nine dash twenty-one, and it's for the third quarter report regarding legislative concerns. All it would also include Daltex legislative concerns regarding repairs, maintenance, and capital improvement at Daltex seen facilities. Uh, also as indicated, senior centers. And the presenters are Ms. Charlotte Francis, Senior Management Analyst, and also Dr. Jill Jim, the Executive Director, both for N D O H. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Benali, so uh turn the floor over to Dr. Jill Jim.
Oh, good morning, Yat Eben Sinah. I'm Ado Vice Chair Slater and Honorable Halona, Honorable Winika, Honorable Begay, Honorable So, thank you for um, this opportunity to provide an update. And also others on the call. I do have Ms. Francis on the line and also Mr. Anselm Lewis. He's with the Daltex Program. And we don't have a report for the Navajo Department of Health Legislative Concern. We were only um, reporting on the Daltex Legislative Concern, which is under the Department of Health Legislative Concern Number One. Um, the Legislative Concern Number One states that the Daltex should prepare a plan to address the repairs, maintenance, and capital improvement needs for existing Daltex facilities. This plan should include a description of all potential sources of funding from federal, state, Navajo Nation, and private sources. Daltex should provide a report regarding this plan to the Health, Education, and Human Services Committee by the end of the third quarter fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Um, we did send a written response to the Hess Committee on June twenty-fourth, um, twenty twenty-two. So there is, I will be reviewing that written response. And the written response, there is a plan for repairs, maintenance, and capital improvement um, needs plan. And basically, the goal is to ensure that centers are operable and providing ongoing nutrition services for elders across the Navajo Nation. Um, in regards to the plan, we do have a task on there. Task number one is to establish and update agreements. Um, the Daltex Program has been working with the um, Division of Community Development and their attorneys to establish a intergovernmental office-based use agreement between chapters and senior centers. So they are, they are updating those agreements with each facility. In that list, there was some um, current approved agreements in twenty twenty twenty-two that we shared across the five agencies. And we are working with them basically to address the ongoing operations of Daltex. Um, the legislative concern, I believe, is really to ensure that there is some sort of plan in order to address and any reduction in closures and maintenance of the facilities. So these agreements that we're working on are to ensure that those responsibilities are clearly written out between the senior center and chapters, and some are outdated and and so those are being updated. And in the twenty twenty-two list, like I indicated, there, those are ongoing activity. For task number two, they're working on updating the senior center. Where everyone received, um, the Hess Committee, not everyone, received a binder of the twenty seventeen Navajo Nation Senior Edition Assessment. And in that assessment, there was a external contractor that came on to the Navajo Nation and conducted an assessment of the repairs and maintenance needs at each of the facilities. And there has been ongoing efforts to communicate with the centers to validate what, um, what repairs and maintenance are currently still active and which ones have been completed. And also to identify any new um repairs and maintenance needs, and they're working on that this week. So um, that information was communicated with the senior centers to do a self-assessment. It's not necessarily to request any new additional funding to, to, to conduct an assessment, but I believe the Division is capable of doing a self-assessment regarding those information. Under task number to aggregate. Okay, now I'm echoing. Chair, can you hear my echo, or is it just me? Okay, now it's gone. Task number three is to aggregate proposed improvement projects.
Good, Dr. Jill.
Can you guys hear the echo?
It was just momentarily. But you're good now.
Okay. Um, task three is to aggregate proposed capital improvement projects is to continue and maintain a list of capital improvement projects. Capital improvement projects are basically um, improver projects that are proposed by chapters since um, we consider them the landowners and building owners. And they work with the senior centers to establish any sort of funding needs. And I'm aware that this process has um, been occurring over time um, across all of the agencies. So for capital improvement projects, we do have one contact, contact analyst that works with CPMD for the New Mexico Projects. Um, we are not the executive sponsor for the New Mexico Capital Improvement Projects and Citizen Projects, but we work with CPMD to make sure that we're aware of what's going on. So we consider our chapter uh, staff and personnel as really close partners and collaborating with them to identify projects and give them any information that they need to um, address or identify and request for funding for capital improvement projects. So and that is our current responsibility with the division as they are maintaining those lists of capital improvement projects. Task four, what we do is we continue to identify the potential um, sources of funds for projects, meaning maintaining a list of sources to support repairs, maintenance, and capital improvement projects. And this includes federal, state, Navajo Nation, and private funding. So Daltex can continue to seek additional sources for nutrition and other services. However, nationally, tribes are also challenged with these same limitations of additional funding to manage services. Um, as we know, that the federal funding that we receive, a lot of that is just for operating um, and reimbursement for food, transportation. And the funding that the Navajo Nation puts into the program is a lot of the personnel funding, which is a chunk of the um, funding that Daltex has, and which is over ten million dollars. So additional funding is definitely needed. It is just the way the government um, allocates its funding. So um, some of the existing sources that we have is just general funds. Other potential funding that we have not explored is a set aside. Um, I know that each fiscal year, those decisions are made. Um, I know other divisions did receive or chapters received some sort of a fixed cost. And I know that that's something that many of the delegates have been interested is working on a set aside, and it didn't, it hasn't occurred for this fiscal year or um, hasn't occurred in the um, three years I've been here with the, with the department as well. We heavily rely on um, the capital outlay projects through New Mexico and their House Bill Two, and then the citizen funds, as I mentioned, with capital improvement projects. Other areas that we're wanting to explore is the Utah Navajo Trust Fund and then the Navajo Utah Commission. They do have some funding and projects that support seniors, but senior centers, but they're not um, in large amounts as well. And in the future, when we um, sort of strengthen the foundation of the, of the division, we would like to consider and receive training and to provide additional services so we can get reimbursed through the Centers for Medicaid and Medicare Services. There is a different program that sometimes um, we are confused with, which is the Old Text Program. They receive um, state funding in order to operate home health services and other services, and also the elder protection um, program there. But under the Daltex Program, I think there are other opportunities to receive reimbursement through CMS. And then with your support from um, earlier on this, um, in this year, I'm getting reimbursement agreements with the um, states of New Arizona and State of New Mexico is one um, avenue that we have worked on within the department. And I believe we can work towards that with the, with the Daltex Program as well. There are other funding sources that are state and federal grant opportunities um, that are related to health or non-health conditions, such as dementia. And these are just um, programs that we have not considered. They're either through Indian Health Service or CDC um, as well. So there is some opportunity um, to seek additional funding. But if we're, uh, if we're looking at entirely just operating on the senior centers, um, I think there, there are funding internally and with the states to try to achieve that. But any expansion of services will require um, a further plan and making sure we um, have the capacity and have the support in um, providing additional services to our elders in the community. And I just want to thank you for your time, and that will end my report um, for the legislative concern for the Division of Aging and Long-Term Support. Okay.
That's it. Felicia, thank you for writing the update report, uh, committee members. Do we have any questions for Dr. Jim's portion of this report?
Chair.
Honorable Vice Chair Carl Slater, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, I am interested in knowing if the program is going to be putting forth uh, any budget requests that align with the report and the F Y twenty-three budget. Can you talk about that?
Dr. Jill Jim?
Um good, good morning again. Thank you, Honorable Slater, for that question. Um, we did receive our allocations from the executive branch, and last year, President Nas did give an additional million dollars, which we were always um, short on in previous years. We were always short a million dollars where we relied on unmet needs or um, personal lapse funds during the budget year to kind of fill that gap. And um, but this year, um, and similar to last year, uh, we were able to receive that additional million dollars to support um, the division and in regards to continuing to um, provide services. So there are no additional um, requests or unmet, unmet needs requests. Um, there were other opportunities that we submitted for, like the Navajo Nation ARPA funding. With the current discussions and legislations, those um, this request for improvements and repairs, um, we're really at, um we're in those proposals. And if they're no longer in there, um I, I don't really necessarily want to say either way. Um, there is an avenue to still get support for senior centers and to meet their unmet needs for repairs and maintenance. The proposal for the current um, budget that we have is basically just to operate and making sure there is um enough operating expenses and personnel to um, to operate nutrition services. Any additional funding, um, those have not been, I have not requested that, and I still would need to discuss that with Chief of Staff. Um, and going forward, I think that's still on the table for the Navajo Nation Council and leadership to fulfill those ongoing repairs and maintenance needs to get the facilities up to par. So no, I don't have a plan for any additional funding for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Um, and hoping that maybe we would get support through the either ARPA funding and still it's, it those are still um, allowed, I guess, to some extent. It's still an avenue for us to do that. And if we do propose repair and maintenance needs and unmet needs, I think the question back to um, just leadership in general is if we're asking for these unmet needs to repair, fix these repair and maintenance issues um, just for, so that facilities can be in compliance, because there are several facilities that are um, that are not, that are closed and redirecting services. So that would be a question, and I would need support on that to ensure that we do find some stable funding at least on a one-time basis to get these facilities repaired. And so I hope that answers your question. Delegate Slater, back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Jim. Honorable Vice Chair Slater, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, thank you. Um, Dr. Jim, could you consolidate? I know that in the ARPA proposal that was in there for eighty-six, twenty-two, um, I don't think there were any funding provided to the Eastern Agency Senior Centers. And there was some incongruity between what was explained in the initial eligibility determination and then the submission that came after. I think it was W. Cruddy forwarded to me. And I appreciated that there were support for funding renovations and rehab at the senior centers in Central Agency and, and particularly in my district. But that is one of the main reasons, I think, the Daltex proposal lost uh, its inclusion in eighty-six, twenty-two, was that it didn't cover the whole nation. Um, I, I would have been fine keeping it in there, but it's just the way things go. But my ask to you is, can you consolidate the renovation, proposed renovation rehabs for the senior centers within District Eleven? And then I can bring that back. I've shown them, I'm talking about my regional leadership, the items that were included in eighty-six in that exhibit, um, well, actually, it wasn't in the exhibit, but that was submitted later. And we may want to fund those from our regional allocation. And so I think there is an opportunity for delegates to fund those rehabs and renovations, but they would come out of their delegate regional locations. And we had spoken about the inclusion for um, like an outdoor gazebo type thing in Sayle Wheatfields. And I think that's something else that the, the district may be interested in supporting. So if you could have your staff do that, because once eighty-six passes, you know, we're going to want to turn out a bill very quickly for District Eleven to um, fund these sorts of programs within the district. And I know that senior programs are something that's very important to us. So that's my ask, and we can just communicate via email on it. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair, Carl Slater. Um, Chair, can I comment?
Yes, you may.
Thanks for that comment. Yeah, well, um, if you could communicate that with me via email, um actually, there's a misconception in eighty-six, twenty, um, on twenty-two on what was mentioned. All senior centers were included um, in that, in that budget proposal, because there was vehicle requests and other operating expenses that were included, that included all agencies where you're not seeing the repairs and maintenance. Remember, there's a there's an inequity in funding to senior centers. The New Mexico House Bill Two and also capital improvement projects support repairs and maintenance for senior centers in New Mexico. That's a given. The state of Utah and the state of Arizona do not and has never given any additional state funding to senior centers in Arizona. And there is, the senior centers in Arizona and Utah are more um, and as far as higher needs for repairs and maintenance, just because there has been no additional funding um, historically and currently to make sure that those facilities are operating. And I, I think one question that we probably do have to ask ourselves is that to what extent do these senior centers continue to operate when we know that there are repairs and maintenance issues that need to be fixed? At some point, I know that with the, the inspections that are done, there wasn't a long-term plan, or there wasn't a plan to start up on or there wasn't a plan to start up centers. And these were buildings that were existing buildings that the chapters work with the program to offer nutrition services. So some have been able to achieve new centers, and some have not been able to, and many still need a lot of repairs. So either way, I think we're doing the best that we can to make sure that funding is sort of equitable in that way, because we know there are, the resources for the centers between the three states are quite different. And so I just want to make mention of that, is as we're talking about the senior centers and making sure they're getting up to par. And as we continue to talk, there is probably limited funding in repairs and maintenance. And there's no decisions that are being made, and so we're continuing to operate the best that we can. So we'll certainly work with the delegates on this and offer information. But to our knowledge, the eighty-six, zero-zero-eighty-six has the most up-to-date information. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jim. Committee member, any further comments or questions? I guess for myself from the chair seat, I know that some of the New Mexico senior citizens, or centers, they're in need of refrigeration equipment or other services. And that's the part, I think, is the high numbers of requests to certain delegates. And so that's the reason delegates were looking for New Mexico project on that listing. There, yes, the capital outlay process, the voters of New Mexico will basically vote on that on the November 10th election. And the overriding trend has been the voters always approve those general obligation bonds for senior centers statewide. So that helps. I think the problem is in getting those projects designed, and then awarding the contracts. Most specifically to this is the Pueblo Pantalo senior center. This particular senior center has been awarded funds, because the nation didn't move on it. Its funds lapsed, and that particular legislation had to be reauthorized three times. We were in danger of losing it again. So, however, the design was completed, it's selected, and to select the contractor, it's in that part that everybody refers to, the one sixty-four review. So that's, I guess, the main, main part that we all have. I don't know if it's a brick-and-mortar wall, or if it's what they call Hakal, the old cedar and mud walls of the Hogans, and in some cases, some of the adobe houses. We just can't get past that particular one sixty-four wall. And when you do ask about it, nobody knows exactly which step within that one sixty-four that a certain document sits. So until we fix that, then we will continue to have these, these questions and discussions. And I know that the, let me add another item. We know that certain of us delegates continue to get texts and notations that certain center is needing to get supplies. And in some cases, community members even donations from the senior citizens themselves when they come to pick up their lunch, they ask to donate. And I think that's the part that remains a very big concern among the members of the council. So how do we get those purchases done? That would be the, my only comments and questions. Committee members, if there's no other comments or questions, then let's go to the report to be presented by Ms. Charlotte Francis.
I'm Tara. This is Dr. Jim. I don't think she's presenting unless if she has anything to add. But at this point, she was going to add, I don't, I didn't receive any information for her to present anything. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. This is Charlotte.
Oh, yeah, Charlotte.
Good morning, Ms. So, Chairman So, a long time no see.
No see.
It's nice to at least say hello. But basically, I really do not have a report. There might have been just a little misunderstanding. The responses that were made previously in other meetings were the responses that we mentioned in Dr. Jim's memo, just to say that those reports have been completed. And the one that she's giving a report on today is the last of the legislative concerns that were brought to Department of Health's attention during the budget year. So we've completed it all upon acceptance of this report. We'll be able to tell OMB that we've completed this task. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Francis. Committee members, with that, the chair is open for a motion to accept the report.
A motion?
Motion by Honorable Vice Chair Earl Slater. committee, do I hear a second? Second by Honorable Edison Winika. Any other comments, questions? And, and Dr. Jim, I guess, in appreciation with, for your work, we still, I think we have a resource within the New Mexico Altechs. Ms. Rebecca Baca and Ms. Marvina Chavez did offer training for, I guess, all Daltechs personnel, so that everybody knows the processes and what does occur within getting state of New Mexico. And we have to really recognize our legislators, and even with the personnel within Altechs. And I know with the governor, you know, she's a former cabinet secretary under the Bill Richardson administration. And she did, the senior programs was a high priority for her, and that has been throughout her years of public service. We appreciate that. Committee, if there's no questions, Mr. Moes will call vote to accept the report.
Yes, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Jr. Honorable Paul Begay Jr. Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona.
Green.
Honorable Pernell Halona votes green. Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater votes green. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Edison J. Winika, green. Honorable Edison J. Winika votes green. Honorable Charlene So. Chair, a vote of four in favor, zero opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Moes. Let the record show a vote of four in favor, zero opposed. The chair not voting. Let's go on to the next report. Ms. Angelica Benali, please review the next item with the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Health Education and Human Services Committee. Number five, Reports B, is with the Office of the Controller. It's an update on late outstanding payments or no payment from Navajo Nation to vendors and service contractors/providers for services rendered to Navajo Nation. Presenters are Ms. Elizabeth Begay, Controller, the Office of Controller, Mr. Robert Willie, General Account Manager with the Office of Controller, also Laura Johnson, Contract Accounting Manager. I believe she works with external funding sources, and she's also with the Office of the Controller. Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Ms. Benali. Ms. Elizabeth Begay, are you on the call?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. This is Jeremy. I'm with the Controller's Office, Purchasing Section.
So you're coming off the bench to provide the report to the committee? I'm saying it with a smile.
Mr. Chair, I was just informed by the Acting Controller to answer any questions in terms of any specific outstanding payment for service contractors that haven't been paid yet. Again, I'm speaking from the purchasing section, so we handle the contracts with the nation. So I don't have a report to give, but I was just put on to answer any questions that the committee might have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Committee members, any questions? For the committee, I guess the main thing that, you know, certain vendors, I know that in, in months past, there was a certain vendor that had a contract to deliver food and supplies to senior centers. But they weren't delivering because of non-payment. There are other aspects that really impede progress. And we were focusing on Division of Social Services. And part of the related report is the contracts that go back as far as 2015 that aren't being utilized, and there are outstanding balances. And how do we move forward, avoid having those funds lapse, you know, even within the contractors? The Navajo business owners, or even public utility situations, in working with, trying to get Navajo citizens qualified for a short, the service line agreement for electricity. In the eastern part, we deal with two electric cooperatives, or thirty-one chapters. One is service, it serves by Continental Device Electric Co-op. And Navajos are owners. To get service from those cooperatives, Navajos have to join the cooperative and become a member to gain their services. Same way with Hamas Mountain Electric Cooperative. We met, an electric cooperative, basically gained an audience with Division of Community Development. They brought up that there are invoices that are not paid that date back 2017, 2018, 2019. And that greatly hampers, even though there are outstanding balances owed to Hamas Mountain Electric Co-op, they are still helping. But the other cooperative, I understand the nation owes them $250,000. And basically, to get them to really assist the chapters, they're basically saying, we want our $250,000 before we talk. And so that really hampers how we proceed. And so that, that's one of the reasons that we were, we were focusing just on those aspects. But as moving forward, we find that there are other businesses that don't want to deal with the Navajo Nation because payments are late. A particular item is the air conditioning. The HVAC system went out in the vital records area, and they couldn't get a contractor to come. Because they deal with late payments. So those are, it's a, it's a big issue. And the committee is trying to see how we could format policy or format legislation to. format policy or format legislation to uh become a better business partner for the whole region. So that, that's the intent and purpose of asking for the report. Committee members.
Office of the Controller, can I have permission to speak? I am a small business owner that has dealt with late payments, is dealing with late payments from the Navajo Nation.
Uh, just a minute. Ms., identify yourself and then, it's a committee meeting and uh, once the, the committee has an opportunity to comment or ask questions, then one of the committee members will allow you to address the committee, then rest with the committee members. Honorable Halona, was that you?
It's the number ending in four six zero.
Okay. Committee members, if you don't have any questions or comments, if you would allow the young lady to address the committee.
Address the committee.
Okay, Honorable Halona. Uh, Ms., young lady, you're on the call. Honorable Pernell Halona has opened the door for you to address the committee. You have the teleconference floor. Please introduce yourself. Star six if you need to get unmuted.
Mr. Chair, she might have to press star six.
Yes. The system probably muted her until now. She has to press star six.
Okay, I did press star six. Thank you so much for the floor. My name is Jackie Begay. I am from Tuna, Arizona. I am a small business owner. We specialize in welding services. We have provided services to the Navajo Nation, primarily out here to the city. And I have currently two outstanding invoices with the Navajo Nation.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, can you have the speaker speak a little louder? Thank you.
Yes, you, uh, Ms., uh.
Okay, maybe this is a little better. Can you guys hear me a little clearer? Okay, so what I was saying is my name is Jackie Begay and I am a Dina from Tubus City, Arizona. And we are a small business owner. We specialize in welding services and basically kind of a broad range of construction services. Uh, we had done a couple, we had completed a couple of projects on the Navajo Nation with the tribe. And we do still have two outstanding invoices that are coming up on, gonna be in a year in August. And the second invoice will be a year due in September. As a small business owner, Navajo owned and operated, we are very hesitant to even work with tribes. Both projects were completed in a very timely manner within the, within the project scope and actually delivered less. Like, uh, one of them at the juvenile center was a skylight, two skylights, the roof was leaking. We repaired that within one week, bought all the materials, all the supplies upfront and brought the crew out, completed the repair, and we're coming up on a year in September for an outdue invoice. And this is due to paperwork loss. That's the common answer I get. I physically have to drive from Tubus City to One Direct to deliver paperwork constantly. And I don't know where the paperwork goes. I don't know why emails get lost. But it's frustrating. And at this point, as a small business owner, we're trying to keep our business afloat through, you know, through this pandemic. And late payments like this eventually do hurt our bottom line. And I don't even know at this point how a lien would work on the Navajo Nation. If we put a lien on, I mean, we put liens on other business owners that we work for. They are late on payment. But to work through the Navajo Nation, it's a completely different entity and there's no guides to help you through it. And I feel like there's a lot of um lost paperwork and phone calls unanswered, emails go unanswered. So as a small business owner, yes, we are very hesitant to work on the Navajo Nation, even though we can get the job done, we can complete it. There's so many things that get in the way of us wanting to do business. We do business in the city and we get paid within two weeks of us invoicing them after work is completed. And I don't see why the Navajo Nation always has so many barriers to get paid. And that's my input as a small business owner. It's very frustrating. And I echo the person that was speaking before with the food services not wanting to deliver. We just, we just really are very hesitant to do business with the Navajo Nation. We put in a lot of effort into even our business proposals and they go unanswered. So it's a lot of time and effort that we do as small business owners to want to get these contracts with the Navajo Nation. But at the tail end of it, we don't get our payments. So what happens then? That's my question. And that's all, that's my comment that I'd like to make, like I said, as a small business owner and hearing about this meeting. And it was sad for me that the Office of the Controller, they didn't have a report. They didn't list these business owners that they have outstanding late payments to. There's no accountability at this point. And at that point, I guess that's all I really wanted to convey to you guys. That's all I'd like to say.
Thank you for your comment and expression of concern. Yes, we at the council are dealing with this. And I'm sure every Oversight Committee is getting this type of information, whether they be in phone calls, texts, or emails. And um it's the processing. When we do get an answer, it's usually because certain offices are shorthanded, many vacant positions. So that's, that's The committee will have to, I guess, number one, huddle up and develop a strategy on how to best approach it. But it, it does uh going to take an action of the full Navajo Nation Council to address it.
At this point, at this point, when is the tribe going to pay on these outstanding invoices? The products have been delivered, the services have been delivered. Why can't we get our payments?
Um, uh, Ms., if you would, uh.
You only speak when you're called.
If you would, um, please, um, email the documents to Ms. Angelica Benali. Right now, you know, I can envision a pile of invoices, maybe three or four feet tall. And it would be hard to say when, because we are legislative, we are policymakers. And we are not the actual personnel that processes the paperwork. So we will, as again, you would give, uh, Ms., our Legislative Advisor, Ms. Angelica Benali, and the contract members. Those types of information and then
Okay.
we can follow up in that manner.
Okay.
Through this committee meeting.
Mr. Chair.
We can't provide an answer. Yes, Ms. Benali.
Mr. Chair, um, I, I believe that the, the report was going to center around the in, I guess invoices that are within the departments or programs that the Health Education and Human Services Committee has oversight to. And so if this one is an outside work and not with any of the programs that has, serves as oversight to, the only thing I can do is forward this Ms. Begay's information to possibly Mr. Willie. And the Budget and Finance Committee is the one that has oversight over the Controller's Office. Thank you.
Yes, and my thoughts are to uh give it to um members of Who is that?
That came from the extension of Ms. Jackie Begay. It was her, that in the statement, it wasn't clear, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, yeah. And, okay. But the thought is we address it to the Office of the Controller. Because it is a systematic problem right now. Okay. With that, committee members, any follow-up questions, comments? There's no follow-up comment. Um, Ms. Benali, do we have a motion and a second to adopt the report?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I don't have a, a motion or a second. However, Mr. Moes, is there one that you recorded?
Yes, sir. The motion rose second, yes.
Okay, committee members. Motion by Honorable Edison Winika. Okay. And Ms. Begay, Jackie Begay, please don't consider this us, the committee minimizing your request. If need be, we'll put it before the Budget and Finance Committee or work with your representative, Mr. Otto, so push this matter forward for you. Thank you. I have your second.
That was the chair.
Oh, yeah, chair. Motion by Honorable Edison Winika, second by Honorable Paul Begay. I didn't put down the initials on my notes. Okay. There's no further comment or questions? Let's go to a vote to adopt the report.
Right, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Jr. agrees. Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona. Honorable Pernell Halona.
Green.
Honorable Pernell Halona votes green. Honorable Carter Russell Slater.
Green.
Honorable Carter Russell Slater votes green. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Edison J. Winika.
Green.
Honorable Edison J. Winika votes green. Chair, a vote of four in favor, zero opposed?
Thank you. Uh, let the record show a vote of four in favor, zero opposed. They're not voting. Let's go on to uh reports five C. Ms. Benali, review that particular aspect of um the next item.
Yes, Mr. Chair and members of the Health Education and Human Services Committee, you have your five C, Hunter's Point Boarding School. And the issues are the budget balance summary and budget expenditures for FY 2022. The second issue is a mandatory student vaccination for spring 2022 school year regarding the student accommodation for lessons. Presenters are Ms. Julia Donald, Principal for Hunter's Point Boarding School, Farin Logan, Business Manager, Hunter Point Boarding School. Glorieta Morris, Parent Coordinator for Hunter's Point Boarding School. Also Genevieve Jackson, President and School Board Member for Hunter's Point Boarding School. Also invited are Sharon Pinto, Deputy Director for BIE. Dr. Walter Coulter, Acting Education Program Administrator for Navajo Bureau Operated Schools. Dr. Edie Morris, Education Program Administrator for BIE. Karen Malone, Acting District Superintendent, Bureau of Indian Education, Navajo Area Office. Emily Arveso, Special Assistant for BIE for the Navajo Area Office. Also is Dr. Jill Jim, Executive Director for the Navajo Department of Health. And Dr. Harold Begay, Superintendent for the Department of Indian Education. And Dr. Carmen Muffett, Assistant Superintendent for the Department of Indian Education. Also are Catherine Dempsey. She's a community member for Oak Springs dash slash Pine Springs. And she's attending in person as well as Michelle Wilson, who's a parent for Hunter's Point Boarding School. And I believe that she is available to attend in person, Mr. Chair. And, and Mr. Chair and members of the Health Education and Human Services Committee, the, um, the Bureau of Indian Education representatives indicated that they were they were at excuse me, that they're on travel, attending a meeting regarding education and, and they were not available. Mr. Chair.
I'm available.
Okay, thank you. Can you, I have a phone number, Mr. Chair, if, if they could announce and introduce themselves. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, who said I'm available?
Uh, good afternoon. This is Janice Damon. I'm the Hunter's Point Boarding School and Corporate School Board President. Good afternoon.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
With that, to tell Honorable Edison Winika, you have asked that this item to be added to the agenda. You could, I guess, give us a introduction to the issue and then we'll go through the listing of folks that would make statements and comments to the committee.
Okay, thank you, Chair and members of the committee. All those are listening in.
Okay, uh, thank you, Chair, and, uh, members of the committee. All those are listening in? Yeah, and for the schniddel, uh, these, uh, is, uh, um, parents were concerned because, uh, they were told their students can't come in person to school anymore because, uh, they were not vaccinated because, and, uh, they were not provided, uh, with, uh, this for a computer or laptops or whatever for them to go to school, uh, uh, from home. But, uh, they were concerned about that. Of course, I went ahead and, uh, I thought this would be resolved right away. I met with, uh, Dr. Harold Begay. And he was concerned about that also. And then I also talked to the Assistant, uh, Superintendent. But I realized, you know, that, uh, I guess, uh, there is a problem because, uh, uh, the, the school is a contra- uh, i- i- is a contract school. And, uh, the school board is the governing body of the school, so it's a decision of the school board. And, uh, but if they could provide all the means to the parents, I don't think there's gonna be a problem. But, uh, they're concerned and, uh, school is gonna be starting again, you know, in, still over a month. So, uh, they were concerned, even the summer students couldn't go, go to school because, uh, some of them were not vaccinated. Although there's other concerns relating to people letting go without, uh, uh, I don't know, I just have a job and I give us the next door. So, um, she gets what you're up with that this, uh, I'm getting. So, it is, yeah, Chair, so, but I, I don't know, maybe, uh, the superintendent and assistant, Assistant Superintendent can let us know why they weren't, they weren't able to resolve the concern. It is, yeah, Chair.
Yeah, lots of stuff, uh. So, um, I guess, uh, in, in this, oh, Satilla, go ahead, continue.
Yeah, I, I think to, to get additional information, it would be good for, uh, uh, Catherine Dempsey and Michelle Wilson to provide additional information and those that are here so that we can, uh, have some, uh, um, specific information on the concerns to get. Thank you.
Okay, so the way you laid it out is there are parental concerns. And I guess there are decisions by the school board. And, and so what we're trying to do then is to get answers on how to best go forward. With that, uh, Satilla, go ahead, introduce your, uh, the folks that would open the conversation.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the first one would be, uh, Catherine Dempsey. Uh, she's a community member from, uh, Oak Springs, Pine Springs. I don't, that, uh, Michelle Wilson, though, she's a parent at, uh, Hunter's Point Boarding School. Uh, between those two, uh, I guess there were other parents that wanted to be involved, so there might be some others on the line. But I guess, uh, the first one would be, uh, Catherine Dempsey.
Yeah, uh, Satilla. I'm asking what either they, let's proceed. Uh, Ms. Dempsey, you have the teleconference floor.
Yat A. Good morning, good morning, um, uh, my name is Catherine Dempsey. And, um, I'm a community member of Hunter's Point Boarding School. And also I, I've been an employee there, um, for several years prior. So, I've worked there several times with throughout my years. And, um, like I said, my name is Catherine Dempsey. I come from Oak Springs, Pine Springs area. And I'm here on behalf of my students, our parents, and our staff who I feel have, have been mistreated, have been disrespected, and have, have been fearful of not only the principal, but of, of the board as well. Um, you know, they get a lot of threatening, threatening information about, if you don't do this, we're gonna do this. If you're gonna do this, you're gonna do this. So we used to have over two hundred students. And now we have less than fifty or sixty left. Because of, a lot of students have left because of, because of the, um, the mistreatment of the school, the, the principal, and the, the board not listening to staff or not listening to the students or the parents. A lot of these kids come from really dysfunctional areas. And they go through a lot of stuff that we don't, we can only imagine. And because of COVID, you know, some of these kids only, um, that they've experienced death. And so, you know, the, I, I sent you an email or, um, they sent you an email of kind of what I, I wrote down and my concerns. So, a lot of this is because parents have been really frustrated. And they've been really, um, they love the school, they love the, the teachers. But the way everything is being handled and the way they're being treated. Um, take for example, one of my kids who had a computer, like Mr. Winika said. He had a computer because of his disability, you know, he, he ended up breaking it. And that was our special ed student. And the parent, um, was willing to pay for it. But, um, for some reason, she just, she didn't have the money or whatever reason she had. She was a very proud woman. And she, she was trying to pay for the computer, but with her own financial, um, situation that she found herself and she couldn't. And the school wouldn't allow, would not allow her another computer. Even though we from our department, from our special ed department can allocate and give that money to the school so they can buy him a new computer or a tablet. But they wouldn't allow it. They wouldn't do it. They wanted the parent to pay that back, but that child was under special ed. And so our special ed, um, director paid half of it. And then, but still the parent couldn't pay the other half. So that child didn't go for, I mean, didn't have a computer for the rest of the school year. So, you know, different issues like that came up. And, you know, we've been, we've been sued a couple of times just for those reasons, because we weren't giving adequate services. And those services have to be given in a certain way that we, we were not allowed to do by the principal. And according to the principal, by the board. That was a board decision is what the principal would tell us. And all the trainings that we need to go through because we do work with special, um, that we went, we would have to go and, um, get training, like for Down Syndrome, for behavior, different things. New things are coming up in special ed, new information, like every, every other program. And we weren't allowed to go there. For the six years I've been, I've been, I worked there, we never, we didn't go to training, any of those trainings. And we weren't allowed because the principal said that the board denied us. And we're supposed to, by law, we're supposed to take trainings along with parents, take them to different trainings. But the principal said we weren't allowed and denied every training that we asked for. So for the, for the past five years since he's been there, we've never went to any training. None of our parents went to any training to help them better, be a better parent for their special students, special needs students. So, um, all these obstacles that we have to go through, all the obstacles that the parents have to go through. I, I, like I said, I was there for six years and each year I had a new supervisor. Every year I had someone new coming in to be the, a special ed director. So every year I had to update them and, and tell them, you know, what, what the students are like. And we would, we would, um, collaborate and, and, you know, provide services for each child. But because of Miss Donald and the way she does not respect special ed, she does, she literally told me, I don't believe in special ed, I don't believe in early childhood. So for that reason, she, um, ended up making us short providing services to these, to our students. So she kind of just bunched them together and we had to, um, provide service as a bunch, as a group that we, we couldn't really focus on the students, IEP, that were legally bonded to do. I mean, that is our job, that is our, our, um, job on the line because of that. And then, so this, this year, um, this school year, uh, they told me that I was non-renewed because of lack of funding. And so I was really surprised because at the spe- special ed department, since I started working, we've always been in the million dollars. And then for some reason, you know, we, we didn't have that anymore. In two thousand twenty-one, we, we showed up in the red. And we get money rolled over, just like everybody else, we get money rolled over and it adds on. But we never had any training. We never had any training we took our parents to. We never spent any money on anything during a pandemic. For some reason, that money was all spent on, we don't know. And now, now we're, um, we're at eighty, about eighty-five thousand in the reds going into this next fiscal year. And so it's, it's, to me, it's really, um, strange and odd that we would be in this position. Knowing that, you know, just a couple of years ago, we were in the million. In two thousand nineteen, we were told to spend down because we had over a million dollars. And we couldn't, we spent some, but not a million dollars. You know, I think the most we spent was five thousand dollars on supplies and different things. Otherwise, everything is the same, the providers, the, the, um, teachers, and also the, the, um, support staff. So everything is the same and there's no, there's, there's no reason why we should be in the red. So now we're starting, this school year, they're starting in that situation. And so I'm, I'm really concerned and I really need the committee's help to clear this up. Like I said, this is my school, this is my community. I love the school because, you know, my brothers and my sisters went to school there, my relatives go to school there. And to see it get less and less than it, it should be. And I, I really implore the Oversight Committee to help the community in Hunter's Point School and our students, our kids. Hope you see the validation of why I have great concerns of the poss- possibility of maybe mismanages of friends or in this hostile environment that they have set in our school. And, you know, it feels corrupt. So I really, I really hope that your committee and you guys see the, my, my concern and can help us. And it's hard to be a whistleblower, but, you know, at this point, that's what I have to be in order for things to be shed to light and help our, our kids at, at Hunter's Point. So thank you very much for hearing me out and, and thank you for your time.
Chair.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Dempsey. Honorable Winika.
Yes, uh, the other person that's available is, uh, Michelle Wilson. I think she, she's on the line. Michelle, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm on the line.
Go ahead, Michelle.
Uh, Yat A, good afternoon. My name is Michelle Wilson. I am a, a parent of children. I have three children that attend Hunter's Point Boarding School. Um, my children are, um, of several that are not vaccinated. And as parents, we choose not to vaccinate our children. And, um, we are not vaccinated as well, and that's our choice. Um, I brought this issue because I was current, uh, concerned about my children. Um, you know, children live or, uh, learn different ways. Um, it, I felt that they learned and progressed while they were in school. Um, through the Zoom, Zoom, um, uh, schooling through, with the teachers. It, it wasn't beneficial. It wasn't, um, it wasn't helping my children at all. It was very con- um, confusing because I had several on laptops at home. And when you're at home, it's, um, very distracting. There's, you know, there's food and there, and then there's, um, my other children there where they want to play. And it, and it was just really, uh, distracting. And I felt that they weren't able to learn like they would learn in a school setting. Um, just like Ms. Dempsey said, there's, um, you know, there was death in the family. Um, their grandmother had died, uh, passed away last year. And, um, they took it really hard. And I felt that if they, when they went to the school on campus and were amongst their peers, um, they were able to take that, um, out of their minds and focus on their school there instead of just constantly being at home. Um, also, there was, um, you know, the, I know there's other options, um, like Window Rock Public School, St. Michael's Indian School. But, you know, Hunter's Point is really unique. Um, I really like the school there. Um, I was a previous employee there as well. I see how, uh, different the school is operated, how they offered, um, many activities for the children. Um, before COVID, they even had, um, sports for the children, starting as young as, um, kids in third grade. Um, they even have other, um, activities such as field trips. And those are the things that kids don't get at public schools. They even have different kinds of presentations, other kinds of activities in the evenings for the families. Um, that, that was really what's unique about Hunter's Point Boarding School. And, um, I, I really like that. And it's a small school, it's more intimate. And a lot of kids get, um, a lot of attention, um, from the teachers. Um, this vaccine mandate that they implemented in March, I believe March fourth is when they said, um, if they weren't vaccinated by that date, then they couldn't go to in-person. Um, they would have to Zoom in from home and attend classes that way. We were issued laptops, but, um, the, the, um, laptops helped, but it was hard to, um, to be consistent. Um, some of my kids, like I said, they're from home and they're just lagging, lazy in the morning. And, um, you know, sometimes I had to sneak around or... And, um, you know, sometimes I had to sneak around or make calls to my, to family and say, can you check on so-and-so? Or my father-in-law was there, but he's in his seventies and he doesn't know anything about technology. He didn't know when, um, my, my cer- certain child had to be on class. He didn't know how to, um, get into Zoom if there were any issues. Um, I was in contact via text, email from work and, um, sometimes there were technical issues, either, just like us, we, I have a big family. So sometimes paying bills, maintaining the internet, um, I fell behind. And maybe a day or so, they wouldn't have class because I didn't have internet. And, um, they, we were given hotspots, but, um, those weren't reliable as well. Um, sometimes I would get calls from the teacher saying, um, no class today. Well, I'm having technical issues from here, from the school. So for this reason, it wasn't consistent, um, teaching and learning. Um, so, um, two of my children, um, have failed and they, they were told that they need to be retained. And, um, I blamed the school for it. Um, if they didn't place this mandate, then my children would have been in school with all the other children. I've done research, I've called several schools, several BIE schools, several public schools, private schools, and they all said they, they don't have that kind of policy or that kind of placement at their school. Um, one school told me it's, uh, up to the parent, that's their right if they want to vaccinate their child. Also, um, um, two of my children were recommended for summer school. Um, and we were told the last week of school, um, no, the second last week to end of school, um, we were told to return to laptops, um, because the last week, um, classes were going to have activities such as field day, um, a day at the movie theater. And, um, teachers couldn't have the kids Zoom in. So the week prior to the last week of school is when we turned the laptops in. I, we got the recommendations for the children to attend, uh, summer school, but, um, they never contacted us and said, okay, pick up a laptop again because our mandate is, uh, still in place. Um, if your child's recommended for Zoom, um, please come back and pick up a laptop. That was never, um, contact or, you know, we were never notified of that. Um, we never really heard anything directly from the principal. It was always from the registrar to the, to the parents. Um, only once in a blue moon, you would see a memo from the principal with her signature on it. But other than that, all notification came from the registrar. Um, I've worked at, uh, another school, private school, but, and everything came from the principal. Um, and that was really, um, concerning to me and, and things weren't consistent. Um, also, um, my children really miss school. They, uh, they wanted to be there, they, um, would see and through Zoom what kind of activities their, their peers were doing. And they would tell me at the end of the day, you know, my class got to do this, all I did was watch or I got to, I had to do something else. Um, you know, art projects or other, um, other activities as such. Um, and, um, like I said, I was previously employed there. So when the board made decisions, it, the principal just followed. Um, she never, um, really said like, well, maybe we should look at it this way. Or they, you know, there are other options. And I feel that, you know, every home, um, is different. Um, some are broken homes and like I said, like I have a big family and all my kids are at school. And I really have no other family member who can, I can rely on that can, um, you know, watch my children. Um, I work, um, my husband works and, and, um, we, um, we have to provide for our children. Um, and maintain the internet and, you know, everything else. Um, and, you know, just like Ms. Dempsey said, there weren't very many trainings offered. But, um, you know, principal is, was always on training. Um, so that was another question and concern that I had. Um, but really my concern is just, just, um, if the, the board would reconsider this vaccine mandate and, and look at the children and their home and the needs that, you know, they, that, it is very important that they attend in-person school. Um, if our activities, other activities, you know, that, that helps the child and their mind to progress. And, um, you know, like I said, there are, um, things maybe that go on at home or, you know, because of COVID, there were family members that they were close to, you know, that, that would take them away from, from, um, thinking about those things and enjoy their peers and being at school and focus on learning. Um, my only concern is just the mandate. Um, and, and I understand the mask mandate, but, um, with the vaccine, I think that's just a little too extreme. Um, I, it, uh, yeah, that's, that's my concerns and I appreciate all of you that are listening and, um, and would appreciate if you will all reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Honorable Holona, I mean Honorable Wanika. Have any follow-up, um, people, comment before turn it over to, uh, the Hunter's Point Administration and School Board?
Uh, Chair, I don't know, there's other, uh, parents online.
Okay. For the folks on the call, are there any parents that would wish to address the committee? If not, then, hmm, let's go to the principal. And, I guess, to give us a timeline on the processes that went into this particular mandate.
Hey, good morning. My name is Julia Donald, I am currently the principal at Hunter's Point Boarding School. Thank you for, um, allowing me to speak. I got an invitation to this meeting yesterday afternoon. And, um, just to tell you right off the bat that I did, I was not aware that we were on the agenda and, um, for what reason. So, um, I'm not sure what we were supposed to address at that time, just that, um, there was a budget and also, um, the vaccine mandate that's on the agenda. So, um, you all know that we went through, um, two years of very hard times, um, with the COVID-nineteen. And all the school did was try to protect everybody at our school. This includes the, the students and staff. And so we went through all of that and, um, we're, this, this past school year has just been like a recovery, um, and it's been very difficult. So, um, I've listened to, to, um, all sides, um, and my superiors, the board members are well aware of it. And I bet they based their decision on mandating the vaccine because they were looking out for everybody's, um, well-being and making sure that everybody was safe. So, um, you know, I would like for, um, Ms. Damon to, to speak to that and how this, the decision was made. And, um, I'm not a policymaker, I am just there to, to enforce the policies that they put in place for, for their school. And so, um, as far as, um, what Ms. Dempsey is talk- talking about, that I, I, I'm just not the kind of person that would air their dirty laundry in public. So if there were issues, how come we were not aware of it before? And I did not know that a person could come directly to this committee to, to address the issues that should have been brought to, to the school board. I mean, we do have our governing body that makes the decisions for the school. Why wasn't it addressed to them before it came to this committee? That is the question that I have. And so it just seems to me like I'm listening to, 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 um, Ms. Dempsey's concern. And, um, and I feel like Ms. Wilson's concern is genuine. And, um, but when there's a policy in place, it is my job to enforce it. So, um, you know, there's a lot of things to be said about what, what the, um, concerns, um, the, to the concerns that were brought to the, to the committee. I'm sorry you had to listen to all of that, but, um, you know, if, if we can, if we can fix that, we certainly would like to be given a chance to do that. And so, um, we do have a protocol in place for our school. And, um, you know, I didn't know that a person could come directly to this committee to address some of these issues before they were heard at the lower level. But anyway, um, so, um, if you have any direct questions for me, I'm willing to entertain it at this time. But I would like, um, Ms., our board president, Ja- Janice Damon, to, to, um, also speak to this, if you will allow her to. Thank you very much and I'm, I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Chair.
Uh, thank you, uh, for, uh, presenting the issue, Honorable Edison Wanika.
Uh, Chair, uh, I, I feel like, uh, this is one of those, uh, situations. It seems that there, there are problems, uh, within the school. Um, my, my reasoning for putting this before the committee was, uh, mainly the vaccination again. But there's more to that and that. So my recommendation, Chair, is, uh, maybe we should, uh, take a visit to the school and do the same thing we did with the school today, get, uh, more information. There's, um, I, I think there's, uh, real concerns related to what's going on there. Hey, there, uh, Chair.
Uh, here, Mosse, Philly. And, uh, the, uh, the principal, um, please understand it wasn't, uh, individual. Number of the committee that basically wanted, but this matter on the agenda.
Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Chair, this is Janice Damon.
Hang on. And so that's the reason that the, the parents and other community members, uh, voiced their concern to the committee. The door was opened by Honorable Edison Wanika. So understand that it wasn't, uh, an individual, um, an individual parent that came to the committee. Okay, Ms. Janice Damon, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Chair, um, Board, Board Members for Health and Human Services. This is Janice Damon, I'm the School Board President for Hunter's Point Boarding School Incorporated. Um, Che Ya Tu Han En Shlen, Kopa Ha Basish Chin, Hashlishi Doshanale Do, Twidichini Doshichay. I used to that in Asha Ya Tethis Ya Ha, um, by Goat Springs Elizabeth Hall. So I'm a community member of St. Michael's. Um, and re- or adhere, we, I believe, and it took a while before we did the vaccine mandate. We did listen to our staff, we did listen to the parents, but the overall consensus from many of the parents was that they were willing to get the vaccine and the boosters, the parents first and then the children eventually followed suit. Based on the CDC and, um, be, um, through President, um, Nez. I, I, I do have a lot of respect for him, um, being able to put his foot down and lead the people and tell the people that they needed to get these vaccines and boosters. So it was a decision, it was the consensus of the board members. It took a while because we did listen to everyone and for the safety of our, our students. And it permeates to the family, the parents, the grandmas, everybody. And then at the same time, we wanted to make sure our staff were safe. We did lose a, a couple of staff that, um, were uncomfortable with the mandate. But we are operating a very good school where our goal is to have a premier school. So that was basis for, um, having this mandate in adherence and respect to the Navo- vaccine mandate. Thank you. Um, did you hear me?
We can hear you.
Chair, I think you're muted if you were trying to speak.
Yeah, the system muted me and I didn't realize it. Uh, thank you, Ms. Damon, for, uh, giving the board perspective. Um, committee members and staff, since this is a contract school, uh, then, um, let's hear from Assistant Superintendent Dr. Moffett, Dr. Harold Agay, and also we'll, uh, hear from Dr. Jill Jim regarding the, um, health orders regarding vaccination and the general policy for the school. So, Dr. Moffett, Dr. Agay, are you on the call? I know in the notices that went out to the folks on the agenda, they didn't, nobody from DODI responded to say that they were unavailable. Okay, Dr. Jill Jim, are you still on the call?
Um, hello, Chair, uh, Dr. Jim's in another meeting, but I can't get her in a few minutes. This is Michelle, hold on.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Ms. Moore. Committee members, perhaps we do what the Honorable Wanika stated, uh, to actually meet at the Hunter's Point Boarding School. It's the folks that we wanted some information from regarding the contract boarding schools and the vaccination mandate on the call. Here looks to the committee for guidance.
Uh, Chair.
Yes, Honorable Paul Agay.
Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair Chanelle, other members of this committee. Those are the air presenters. We have to really consider these as very, well, I'm not saying it's any less important, but these, these issues need immediate attention. Uh, and it's under our purview to, to make things happen. And you know, history tells us within the last three years that visiting onsite is, is the best solution to, to remedy these problems. I see either, uh, they could go to a, uh, has end up now or even just to make things better. And I think, uh, physical appearance there will also indicate that. Uh, the suggestion that Honorable Delegate, uh, Wanika, I, I concur with that. And we do have other issues forthcoming. And, and I have two other, uh, locations that has been brought to my attention. So this type of problem exists everywhere. But I think we need to immediately address them as they become known to us. So, it is a bad, a sad, a chair. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, this is Janice Damon. May I speak?
Go ahead, Ms. Damon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, everybody. You are more than welcome to come to our school. We have a very good school. And we'd like to showcase it. And we, I, I, as a board member, do not see any problem with that. Um, we've made many improvements. We, and then we can elaborate on some of these concerns. But right now, I think it would take a lot of time, but I really feel that you'll be impressed with what, what Hunter's Point has to offer. And I'm glad the parent, Ms. Wilson and Ms. Dempsey, the community member, elaborated and said, it is a good school. It is a good school. So you're more than welcome to visit our school. Just let us know ahead of time and we'll be, we'll be ready to have you visit the site. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies, and all those that are in attendance. I'm gonna mute myself, but thank you so much.
Committee members, uh, interviewing or, and the next, or, or schedule. Excuse me. Next regular meeting of the committee is July 13. And I think the first week, the first 10 days is pretty much, uh, we're all, uh, committed. So what are your thoughts for July 11th or July 12?
Our Chair, our, um, sir, this is Janice Damon again. I apologize, but we're, we're on travel. We're doing, um, we're, we're, we're doing a training and then we're having, um, an overall training for our staff during that time. So may I please ask if we could do it the latter part of July or the beginning of August? Because we're all not going to be available during that time until after the eight, the 18th or the 16th. Please, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Damon and committee members. Almost like 21 days before we have another opening. We, we'll leave it to the committee to revisit the, uh, the, the times when we would go to the Hunter's Point Boarding School. Committee members, a motion and a second to accept the report and the possibility of, um, doing the Hunter's Point Boarding School. And we'll leave it to, uh, Ms. Angelita Benali and the administration at Hunter's Point on designating, uh, a time and a date.
Motion, Wanika.
Motion by Honorable Wanika to accept the report. And a second by Honorable Paul Agay. Committee members, any other questions, comments? If not, then, um, Mr. Moes. Roll call vote, please.
Honorable Paul Agay Jr., Honorable Paul Agay votes green. Honorable Pernell Holona.
Holona votes green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater votes green. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Edison J. Wanika, green. Honorable Edison J. Wanika votes green. Honorable Charlene So. Chair, a vote of four in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Moes. Let the record show four in favor, zero opposed, the chair not voting. With that, the vote, we go on to new business. There being none. Seven, oh, business, there being none. And then we go to number eight, close this meeting. Announcements. And again, with the possible visit to Hunter's Point, uh, we'll let staff, uh, take care of that. That, so preliminarily, it looks like the last week of July. We do have work sessions on the 6th and the 7th. And we have, I think, a regular committee meeting on the 13th. And then NABE work sessions and meetings to basically set the agenda for the summer session that would occur on July 14th. And then, of course, the council session starting the 18th through the 22nd. And then after that, the week of, I think it's the 20, 20, 20, 25th. Yes, the week of 25th. And the next other meeting would then be July 27. Meeting members, we'll leave it at that.
Honorable Charlene So. Hi, I don't mean to interrupt, but I do have an answer to the question that was proposed at the beginning of this meeting.
Oh, Ms. Loya Henderson, yes. You have the floor.
Thank you. Okay, in, in regards to the legislation 20-22 and the adoption of a plan of operations, there is nothing prevent, um, that's in the statutes that would prevent a plan of operations from being adopted at any time. However, in looking at the budget schedule that was proposed and adopted, the divisions have until July 5th to submit their proposed budgets. And so I believe that's what the division was, uh, was inquiring about is that they do have to submit their budgets. And if this proposed, uh, plan of operations is adopted, it could impact the budget that they are going to submit for review for the 2023 fiscal budget year. And so I would defer back to the division to, to state whether or not adoption of this new plan of operations is going to impact the way that they do the budget or any of the 2023 budget. However, if this proposed, uh, plan of operations is not adopted prior to the submission, uh, schedule, July 5th, they have about two weeks to submit the, their budget for, um, their budget documents. Uh, they can later on, or the, the committee can later on adopt the proposed, um, plan of operations. And the division would then need to some, um, resubmit a revised budget plan for review prior to, um, well, hopefully prior to the, uh, committee adopting all the, the fiscal year budget in September. I hope that answers the question. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Job well done on the first question from the committee. Uh, in that July 5th deadline, is that an administrative, uh, deadline?
Yes, um, in the budget preparation calendar, July 5th is the first, the middle of the budgets. That is the due date. And then from July 6th through the 8th, additional information would still be submitted for the branch chiefs' budget hearings, which are to take place on July, between July 11th through July 13th of next month.
Committee member, um, regarding the work session on Monday, I couldn't make it because of other circumstances. And I was wondering what the outcome of that work session was. The other we could do is offer a special meeting on July 6th to consider this legislation to amend the plan of operations for Division of Social Services.
Chair, this is Delegate Slater. Can I ask a question?
Uh, Honorable Carl Slater, you have the floor.
Okay, so this is, is it for 2022, the, the legislation? And I wanted Delegate Holona to confirm that the only program that's being touched in this legislation is pulling family assistance services out of self-reliance and standing it up into its own program. And if that's the case, I, I'm comfortable voting on that. But anything related to Navo Treatment Center for Children and Families, uh, as long as that's not included in amendment, then I'll probably be fine voting on it today if we wanted to add it to the agenda. Or adding it to the next, or adding it to the next committee meeting, just regular meeting.
Yeah, the, uh, Honorable Slater, the next regular meeting is the second Wednesday of the month. That would be July 13th. Uh, we could do a special meeting for myself. The calendar is open for July 6th. Morning meeting, 10:00 AM. And just to address this, uh, legislation in question. Honorable Holona, there's a question for you from Honorable Slater. And there, we can move forward.
Chair, sir. Delegate Agay.
Honorable Paul Agay.
Um, uh, thank you, uh, Chair. Um, uh, our emails that were sent out, uh, about attending Anarop Point Marina Tour and work session on that week, on the 6th, 7th, 8th. I think that might be an issue, a conflict with our, this, the schedule that we're trying to make. Some delegates will be traveling, uh, further than the rest. I did.
If we'd, uh, hold meetings for that, we could be there in the morning of the 7th for the work session. If not, we wait till the 13th.
Let's wait until the 13th. Yes, hold on.
Uh, Honorable Pernell Holona.
Yeah, if the 6th won't work and the 7th won't work fine, if there's no problems with those deadlines you were talking about, that should be okay.
Okay, Sheila, thank you for, um, your consent. Well, Gisela, thank you for your consent, Honorable Prenell Holona. With that, let's motion to put the, let's just put the legislation on the July 13th agenda. We'll not complicate our schedules with that committee member. There's consensus by three members to go to the 13th with that legislation. But that committee member's chair is open for a motion to adjourn.
Motion, Wanika.
Motion by Honorable Edison Wanika. Second by Honorable Paul de Gay. Honorable members of the committee, motion to adjourn entails no debate. Mr. Moes.
Yes, sir. Honorable Paul de Gay Jr. green. Honorable Paul de Gay Jr. votes green. Honorable Prenell Holona.
Honorable votes green.
Honorable Prenell Holona votes green. Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater votes green. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Edison J. Wanika. Honorable Edison J. Wanika votes green. Honorable Charlene So. Area vote of four in favor, zero opposed, adjourned at 12:48 p.m.
Thank you, committee members. We are adjourned.